We have a forum now at this point, it is six o'clock. We call to order. David, are we ready?
Sure.
Can you do your call, please?
Alderman Boyd.
President.
Alderman Tom.
President.
Commissioner Benton.
President.
Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Brown. I know it's been a while. Commissioner Peoples.
Not present.
Commissioner Reeves.
Not present.
Commissioner Vine. Commissioner Young.
President.
And Commissioner Stradler.
President.
With the forum, there are a couple, uh, first thing we'll do is look at the minutes for January 17th. If you have not had a moment to review them. I mean, January 7th. Yes. I'll entertain any motion for that.
Please do. Second.
It's to move a second, it's a simple vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Tom.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Stradler.
Aye.
And the comparison was, uh, seven ayes and one extension.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, with that, there are several, first off, let me thank everybody coming in. This is not our normal meeting day or schedule, uh, but I know it was definitely needed and we were able to meet calendar accordingly. I know that many have had a schedule change, so we had to make some adjustments on the front end and on the back end to get some things moving. Uh, with that, there are a couple items that changed us to the agenda, Don, can you tell us what we got?
Well, certainly, yeah. Thank you for being with us tonight and noticing that we're changing the planning commission from a monthly meeting now to a weekly meeting. Um, uh, we, uh, we want, we thank you for having two Monday meetings in a row of times. Uh, we won't meet again, establish our regular meeting schedule in February. Uh, tonight, uh, this was the featured item, I would say. It's first on our agenda. Uh, your packets were, uh, included it. Um, it's a rezoning request with that, as you see the fine print here, it's been withdrawn by the petitioner. Uh, talk about that for just a second. It's in the Jeff Van Dulu neighborhood. It's really at the corner of Jefferson and Camp. The northwest corner of Jefferson and Camp. Uh, the northeast corner of Jefferson and Camp is the NGA site. This is a corner that, I mean, the petitioner was requesting, uh, a zoning change because they were consolidating some parcels, the parcels that they were consolidating weren't all zoning the same, uh, and having met with the zoning administrator, filled out a petition. I mean, this was a petition from a property owner, uh, essentially it's Northside regeneration, uh, that owns the property, was requesting this. We, uh, met with them early in last week, uh, found out some more things from their application, uh, which we appreciate knowing, uh, and Cecilia did yeoman's work in researching all the issues and preparing a, uh, planning commission report and resolution. Uh, that, we, in your packet, we sent it to the applicant and they asked that we not take it up tonight. First, they were asking that could we table it. Uh, it's one of those things, this is a petition, we have 45 days to look at it. We said, no, we're not going to look at it tonight. Uh, uh, you want us not to look at it tonight, we do. They have withdrawn it, uh, and instead, they spend more time looking at the resolution staff report that we wrote and come back. Uh, if they're opting to come back, they have to reapply, they'll pick in a new 45 day plan when they reapply. See what type of price comes through that. Uh, as you can well imagine, it was a Northside regeneration area, so it might have attracted quite a bit of discussion and our business tonight since that. Oops, throw my new toy. And second on the agenda is, and the agenda is, after the first one, relatively short, we're going to do this, and then we're going to do something on the plan. It's a, it's a request from, uh, the property owner that stands in the preservation board. This is that situation where, um, most items of the preservation board are final actions and you can appeal to court.
Did somebody just join?
Yes, this is Mary Reeves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, so we're just picking up, we had one item, but by applicant's request, a rezoning has been called, it's withdrawn, their petition will likely be back at a later time. So up now is the preservation board review of the demolition of 2205 Lynch Street. Uh, it is 2205 Lynch Street. It is one of those situations where actions of the preservation board, uh, one type of action, uh, is deemed temporary, uh, or preliminary, uh, for a 30 day period, gives an applicant a chance to say whether a demolition decision by the preservation board, uh, is something that they wanted to, uh, live with, survive with, or whether they would like to ask the planning commission to take up that review. Tonight is simply that statement. We're taking up the review, uh, requested by this applicant. If we choose to take up the review, we do so, and the subsequent meetings on just the record, uh, the preservation board action, we review that, the planning commission has the choice of upholding what the, what the preservation board, uh, changing it in terms of modification or reversing it. That action then gets to be appealed to court if they would like. If we choose not to take it up tonight, we, as they're shortchanging, um, not shortchanging the applicant, because the applicant could then, uh, appeal directly to court. So, uh, as we're familiar with this, tonight, I'll just do the briefest of giving you an idea of what this is. Uh, you are aware that we certainly got this application, a request from the applicant's attorney. Uh, we're pretty careful about being conscious that it's unreviewed and not new materials. Uh, so we, uh, will go and just show you tonight the preservation board meeting, relevant materials, all of it, that is in your packet. I'm going to go through the preservation, uh, PowerPoint, just so you can see what it is. Uh, it is 2205 Lynch Street. Uh, this is the, it's a building, it's on a rear of a lot. Uh, it is, this lot is identified one in from the corner, uh, from the Benton Park, local and national register of historic district, so the jurisdiction is, it's a national register district, and the request was demolish it, local and historic district. In this, oh, to give you an idea, the, uh, the fund, oops. Is, this is from 1875, so it's in this corner cluster here. So it's a, it's an old building. Uh, and these are some pictures from it, uh, from the staff report from March of 2014, April of this year, uh, west of all. So you can see it's a rather compact building. Uh, current condition, the request, uh, the hearing at the preservation board was October 22nd. Uh, Dan Krasnoff of the preservation board staff and Alex Keeling, uh, the representative of the attorney, uh, from the applicant, he walked there that night and here tonight. Uh, here's some more pictures. Uh, you can certainly see that it's a compact house, though it has been some damage. Uh, here's the aerial view of again, it's the one that's one in from, uh, from Cross Street, in the back of the lot. Uh, streetscape is such that, uh, you can see it there towards the back, back of the lot. Otherwise looking around. Again, this is a historic district. Uh, these are items where you've seen, uh, are, uh, right up to you. Uh, we don't make a recommendation to you for a second, so we ask for you to be thinking about, uh, this step tonight, uh, and have a discussion.
With that, is there any discussion from the committee of decision?
I'd like to make comment. So, okay. So, you know, uh, some of us received, um, material from, from, uh, Mr. Keeling earlier, um, last month, I believe, um, and discussion whether or not that was, uh, proper. My thoughts are, you know, at the end of the day, this is still a resident and citizen that's trying to demolish, um, properly, uh, property, uh, a building on a piece of property that, that she owns. My thoughts is, you know, she's coming to us through this process to try to avoid going to court and avoid those necessary expenses. I know that the preservation board has ruled, uh, my thoughts are, you know, do we have a obligation to the citizen to review this at our board before having to, them having to go, go to court? My thoughts are, yes, probably, um, we have that obligation. Um, and that should be taken into consideration whether or not the attorney acted properly or not.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll just to comment on the tail end of that, um, you know, I had specifically asked for the ordinance on the, um, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents, um, the petitioner from providing additional information, we just can't consider it.
Right.
Um, and I, you know, on a, a jury of the court, there's sometimes information given that is instructed not to be considered, so I think, you know, I, I don't see anything in this that directly prevents what happened from happening. I just think we need to be careful in how, um, we move forward if we do for people that did get that information. I do know there's a number of us that didn't even receive it.
Right.
Um, so, I, I tend to agree.
I think the flip side of that might be that, um, one, you know, this has come before the preservation board, not twice. They've ruled in the way that they've ruled not twice, it's brought to us twice to consider whether or not to take it up. The question for us as it relates to the preservation board's actions, are do we think that they were thorough and did everything that they were supposed to do to the letter? Without any new information, I don't know. Perhaps we come to a different conclusion, perhaps we don't. My concern is we're wasting the resident's time, uh, and creating a second step when there is a third step that they could just take now and get some final resolution from the court. If we end up just deciding that we agree with the preservation board and that they did everything thoroughly and considered all the evidence that that building division or whomever else took this information into consideration, it's certain that it's historic, that it checked all the boxes, that it can stand for however long and needs to stand. So, my thought is in the interest of expediting the residence process, that we just suggest it goes to court where a final resolution is made.
Well, Don, did they have the option of going to court after the preservation board or did they have to do this step first?
Well, can go to court anytime.
Two things. They've, uh, been to the preservation board twice, once over a year ago, and the demolition was denied. Uh, and we were asked to take it up, and we didn't take it up that time. In that intervening year, they did not, to our knowledge, go to court, or we did not go, we summoned the court because they had gone to court. Uh, a demolition, when you come to the preservation board or the cultural resources and you get a response, you get a final determination of what happened, uh, you can't turn around the next day and say, we want to demolish again. There's a year's waiting period, so what I'm getting to is, they did wait a year, uh, there was the intervening year, they did not go to court, uh, and they came back to the preservation board, uh, in October, created a new record in October, uh, and the preservation board denied it at that time. And so now they're just in that, within the right to say, folks, uh, we'd like to ask for the planning commission to take up a review.
So my view is that if they wanted to expedite it and go to court, they would have gone to court already as opposed to bring it.
They're not eligible to go to court yet on this, on the action from October. Because it's, yeah.
My, my, my concern as chair is that there has been information sent out to Commissioner some, and not all, not universal across the table, first of all. That's my, that's my concern, that is not equitable to the law of city, that some has been sent out and not. Uh, so what was in that packet and what was not in that packet, I don't know what information was or was not included, I don't know, but as if everyone did not get it, that's my concern that it was not set equally. But at this point, as chair, I simply entertain the motion, please, for the table. Uh, we had discussion, any other discussion from the commission?
This was, um, I'll just mention it because I was at, uh, the last preservation board meeting, I don't believe I was.
Randy, if I, just to make a point, one of the points, uh, the point I will make is as Randy's standing, he is, the unique above our membership here, is he has a dual role in that he's both a member of the preservation board and a member of the planning commission.
Right, and, um, and granted, I don't, I don't recall, I don't think I was at the very first time this hit, this came to the preservation board, but I was at the last one in October, and if I recall, there may have been a, the case may have been presented from a different angle.
Is that a common round?
But, and maybe Randy might be able to clarify, but there was no really new information. It was the same set of circumstances, um, and that's why it just, yeah, I think that we, we got unanimous, so that everyone voting, all could have just did not meet the criteria. So I'm not sure, unless there's something glaring, but if they're, if they're not able to present new information, I don't see how we're going to come to a, a different result. Um, and again, you know, it'd be a waste of, of everyone's time. That said, I really don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, so I'll go with the consensus.
I would make the motion that we, since we're, we don't think that. They moved a second, that the action, action item is not taken up and returned back to the petitioner, uh, as such. David, would you take a role, please? A call.
Nope.
It's a no, okay. Alderman Tom.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Reeves.
No.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
No.
And Commissioner Stradler.
Aye.
All right. One, two, three, four, five, six ayes, and one, two, three, four ayes. So the motion passes.
With that, the petitioner still has their own ownership and action not available to them, it is just not taken up before this commission at that point. So that's where we are with that.
Thank you, members of the press, and these are always challenging ones. Uh, so of course, there's always items that might happen in the private marketplace or might happen in court. We'll change gears now and do the chapter 99 wanting studies, but we're taking up this time. Cecilia will come and make the presentation on these. Uh, the first one is one of these large geographic areas that we do rarely, uh, can all home and homes area, and, uh, this one.
No. Right for 2019.
I will tell you, I have a question, do one thing, I suppose, Cecilia gets ready.
Yeah.
Is that, um, we, as you know, had a meeting last week, uh, and we prepared for this week, and we did a slightly different version of our resolutions than, than you see. Uh, it was a quick shorthand version, uh, that had more graphics than text, uh, and we hope that was convenient and for you guys to see.
So you think we like pictures better?
I have a pre-older, Cecilia has various stuff, and we know how you are with maps, Ed, but we don't. So, uh, tonight we have guests related to the remodel plan. This particular one, we have an honored guest in the Shane column, is representative of this area. He doesn't have a specific developer, because it's for a large geography, meaning it's been offered to us from LCRA for our review, uh, and then of course goes on to the Board of Alderman. In that regard, uh, three members of SLDC staff are here, including Otis, uh, and I'm going to ask Dale Rusak to make, Cecilia is, well, we get to a couple maps if, uh, I have Dale talk about it a little bit, because it is unique, because it's a large, large redevelopment.
Sure. So, um, that's pretty located, this is the Merrimack South Mountain, South Korean State Street redevelopment area, so there's a site map on screen for you here. Uh, site is located within the Dutch Town Mount Pleasant as well as the townway neighborhood. The proposal is to incentivize development in the 290.65 acres, and then we'll go through this, we've been all that in a little bit.
So Dale, there's two pages of maps, which are the four exhibits from your, your remodel plan.
Would you like to slip her?
Oh, well, maybe that would be helpful.
Down.
Oh, oh, let's see, I may not need it. But, um, this is the map, you know, of the area, and the map on the left is primarily talking about the condition of properties. And generally speaking, the properties, and obviously it, it varies from parcel to parcel, but generally the properties we've classified as fair, except for Cleveland High School, which is the large block area, and the theater, which is that little triangle, and we know for each, for sure that both of those are in, in poor condition, so we've identified them that way. And the, the map on the right, um, most of the area clearly is residential, but there are several corridors where there's concentration of commercial, in any case, it's just a Carter commercial maybe on each block, and so those dark, uh, spots are showing where the concentration of, of commercial, uh, mixed use kinds of buildings are within the area. So everything that's not showing black on the right map is either residential or institutional, because in addition to Cleveland High School, there are also several churches within the area. Thank you. There's one more to, no, going back. Yeah, that's the other set of maps.
What churches are you referring to?
Well, the, the little, the little thing sticking up on, on the left is kind, was there, uh, historically a church, right?
No, it's, uh, it's an old school bought by a Buddhist monk.
Well, whatever, yeah.
The Old Scruggs Elementary.
Yeah, whether, whether you call that a church now, I don't know, but at any rate, I, I did, perhaps that's not accurate. Um, and then this shows proposal and use, which is essentially, uh, we see the, uh, Cleveland High School as being perhaps some kind of mixed use project, uh, and all the other, uh, existing commercial would remain that way, but the primary focus of the plan is to preserve the area, to encourage its renovation, and on a parcel by parcel basis to see renovation occur. So the plan would allow individual property owners to get real estate tax abatement if they do a significant recap of their properties, or it would allow a developer to come in and, and take a portion of the area that, uh, they are particularly interested in and have a more organized renovation of properties, and obviously the Cleveland High, uh, the Cleveland High School site would take a major developer to, uh, do significant work there. Could be a lot of restoration, but there's also room within that area because of the athletic fields and all, that there could even be new construction within that project.
It's not anticipated that there'll be a master developer?
No, could happen, but there's none on the horizon.
And if an individual wants to do their own renovation and seek tax abatement, that's a process of application to LCRA?
That's correct. Then the one on the right is just partly important for public relations in that stating that there's no use of eminent domain and this. That's correct, right, yeah, the properties cannot be acquired to the use of eminent domain as a result of this.
And is it, uh, correct, Dale, that in that boundary, the boundary common to all the maps, if somebody applies for a building permit, is one of the things that happens with, uh, chapter 99, is the, the village has some design controls? Will you get plans sent to you of all the projects?
Correct. Once, if this is approved by ordinance, uh, this then goes into whatever record the building department has, and when a building permit is applied for within this area, uh, the ordinance will require that it be sent to us for review before it's approved.
So that's predicated on one, if they pull a building permit?
That's correct.
Which is a big if in some cases.
Well, it could well be. I mean, we'd have no way of knowing if they don't pull.
Well, especially since I only have one building inspector that does all of the housing conservation inspections as well as property inspections and like. Uh, so, and then in terms of a design review, what does that look like?
Well, we're obviously.
Does that go to you?
Pardon?
Does that go to you and your staff?
Yes.
So I won't expect very much out of that, though.
It, it depends on what is proposed to a great extent. If it's an existing building, we would want to see the basic architecture of that building preserved. If it's a new construction, then we would want to see something that would fit into the neighborhood, but certainly not necessarily mimic the architecture of the neighborhood.
Any further questions for Dale?
What prompted the boundaries of this?
It's an area that we have discussed for a long period of time, and, uh, it's a concentration of area that, that could use a lot of activity, could use a lot of work, and, uh, I think it was jointly decided between us and the Alderman that this is a reasonable area to concentrate on.
The genesis of the area was that there was a development team that was working on a master plan for the redevelopment of Cleveland High School and the surrounding area around it, and SLDC and their infinite with, um, uh, the development team never, uh, how would you like me to put this, Otis? So essentially, they did all of the work, and this was the area that they started to create plans around, and then they are no longer interested in doing the project because of some shenanigans in part of the city. So that's how the boundaries came into being.
So before us is now, uh, and, uh, city government has many branches, a certain branch in the letter, so the branch, uh, we will make the determination or recommendation to you guys that we find this area blighted, that we find this to be in performance, Cecilia will fill up the rest of the PowerPoint, to be in compliance with the city's using land use plan, and then with the establishment, if I get this right, Dale, this area will in these boundaries, regardless of, of past, uh, somebody can come in and ask for the tax abatement, ask for the help of the city, uh, without the creation of, uh, what chapter 99 is. It's, uh, it will be in place for this year. Is that in essence correct?
Well, without the creation of a 99, I'm not quite sure.
Without, if there was not a redevelopment area here of chapter 99, if somebody wanted to do some development and get them set up through the 99, chapter 99, from individual, they have to do it individual.
But this, this, that's correct, they would not have to do it on an individual basis.
So I'm assuming since this has your support, Shane, that has community support as well?
Uh, I mean, it's, I'm sorry, what was it? Very typically.
That it has community support?
Basically, I was told by the mayor's office that this is the only way that they're going to be able to support anything with Cleveland High School, to get a developer, and they're now that they scared the other developer away. So SLDC told the mayor's office that this is the next step, which, and full transparency, when I first got elected, this and full transparency, when I first got elected, this was also a first step that I was told by SLDC that we needed to do. It's basically a trick that they play with most of the freshmen Aldermen. You know, come in, we'll do a Chapter 99 that'll create some incentives for people to come in and do projects in your ward. And then, without any development team behind it, you know, it's just a, you know, statement on a piece of paper. So, because SLDC doesn't actually put resources into managing development within the area of Chapter 99 plans, unless someone comes to the table, and they don't actively seek out people to go to the table or come to the table, what they may do after they pass this, if I supported it with the Board of Aldermen, is then put out an RFP, and, you know, hope in one hand and shit in the other, and see which one gets killed first. Am I saying anything?
I wouldn't say it the way it is. I will make two points. One, there are refreshments. Two of us, all of us have our coffee back.
So, this is the strategic land use plan for this area.
Which is mostly?
It's mostly neighborhood preservation, some areas of industrial preservation, especially with these along Merrimack, I don't know if by, um, same commercial area. One spot of neighborhood development area and a small area of industrial preservation. The plan includes four development objectives, which is to facilitate the redevelopment of Cleveland High School, so they're going to recap existing commercial buildings along major streets, facilitate residential and mixed-use activity in redevelopment areas, and facilitate residential development activities throughout, through the use of micro and sub-developers. With that, that's fine, that this plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the Scarborough Justin Historic Heritage Plan were applicable and, uh.
We have any more discussions for, you know, just.
Curious, is there a map of the vacant blocks included in this area?
There's a map of the vacant lots.
Oh, there are lots, is there a lot of vacant, not really. The orange area that was on the loop, um, so right in the middle of the area, that's a vacant lot, some, there are some homes at the south end of the lot there. But the entire north end is completely vacant and occupied by the city. Granted, the west side is like, you know, a few lots kind of dabbled throughout, but very few, most of them are vacant buildings, to be honest. So, I am curious, though, when you all went through, who did the survey? Was there a survey, which was kind of like by eye?
Most of the buildings in this area are vacant, or most of the buildings are?
There's probably about a 20% vacancy rate in most areas. Along the Virginia corridor, there's probably a 30% vacancy rate of buildings along the Virginia.
Do we have any photos of this area at all?
No, we, so, I'll look at map B1, its conditions of properties, that's the map that was provided to us. So it's, like, we said, it's making an average. We have the one photo that's in your packet, given our time, it's really an aerial photograph. We independently go out and take photos.
Is this, is this, it seems like a large area to blight, is this normal, or?
We, we have areas in town that's 300 and some odd acres blighted to individual parcels, but you don't see large areas like this very often.
This is actually a good tool to use, and it's probably more effective than doing the little single lights here and there.
But I'd, uh, more helpful when you actually have a development team that's working on projects in that area. Otherwise, it's left to, to micro developers, if you want to call them that, to use their resources to be able to come forward for tax and funding.
So, Alderman Coen, you talk about 30%, 25%, or whatever percent used. What percentage is owned by LRA?
Very little.
Very little?
Yeah. I think at any given time, I have between maybe 30 and 50 LRA properties in the ward total.
So, what type of, um, marketing will be done for this? So you anticipate maybe an RFP going out and?
What I was told by the mayor's office is that, uh, there.
Can I?
Sure.
Uh, we will accomplish the reinforcement of the area, and I know the Aldermen are just wondering about what happened previously, but we will, um, put all our resources, try and do this in a very professional way. And so it will be an RFP, but it, but we will put a lot of energy behind trying to respond.
And Otis, can you just give me a, just a thought of what that would look like? I mean, how that, how would you market that? How would you attract someone to?
So, um.
According to Steve Conway, that this was best project, um, that this plan, this would be put together for any developer in the history of the city of St. Louis. Do you want to believe our little?
Well, I guess, uh.
So I think that what we will be doing is, is trying to take advantage of some of the, he called them micro, uh, investors that are in that area, but also some of the others. But there are a number of entities that are working in the region. I think what we want to do is to try and catch some of the interest that is national, uh, some of the, I think, there. But, uh, you know, I, I think we, we were moving along, we thought that we had a, uh, a path forward with the developers that all, uh, brought to the table.
And the reason, I'm asking this, it's not, I want to be generic. It's not just about this redevelopment plan, but I know there was a small scale redevelopment plan that's for natural bridge. And so there's little geographies where we do our stretch here and there. And the challenge, and I, and I hear Alderman Coen's frustration is, we do this and then we have no help, and it just, we just do it as an exercise. And it's real important to us as Aldermen that there is someone at SLDC that's a champion, that's marketing. I mean, I know you have a real estate person over there, right? I know you have staff too, but we have to make sure that we have enough staff that this is meaningful. And it just doesn't sit around for years to come and just collect dust kind of sort of.
So I, I get on my soapbox, and we fund things ourselves without the help of the city for the most part. And so, we would appreciate any additional tools and funds to help us with that market.
And, and I appreciate that, so maybe that's the conversation that we need to have moving forward. I mean, I'm saying this in all sincerity, I'm not trying to put you on the spot about anything. I'm trying to think about the growth of the city of St. Louis and how we use the tools effectively.
And I think our goal is, uh, I always take this point, Alderman, in things we do, and things we do because of just lack, lack of resources, or, uh, directions that are provided, you know, to take to, take to do that. And so what I've, uh, what we are going to do is try and make this work, use that as a, as a model for how we move forward.
And let me ask you this, though, how do you see the planning department playing a role in this process? With moving forward with this redevelopment plan?
Well, I think that, you know, uh, we have a good working relationship with planning, and I guess that the, as things come up that you need to bring back to the commission or, or if there are an opportunity to work with one of the smaller, you know, developers where we can use, utilize planning assistance, if they have, you know, have the capabilities, they also suffer from micro resource. And so, uh, it's just, you know, the ability to be able to get that done. And so I, I think so, that's where we would be looking for. A difficult part of that is to be working with, uh, potential developers who come with, uh, the plan.
And, and this is probably part of a larger discussion, but.
Then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna slow you down for a second, if you would. Because, and I do understand that the Aldermen have a particular issue, concern, and question with SLDC as a plan, and, and, and larger plans. But in this particular case, we do what, I want to look at, at this issue.
No, I, I, I understand.
I just say, I don't want us to get too far off the.
And I don't want to do that either, but I think it's important that the planning commission understands how they can play a role in developing the city of St. Louis overall, and that things come before the planning commission and we just vote on it, but you don't really have a big picture of how this stuff works. And then there's other things going on, so that, I just want the city of St. Louis to be efficient in how we utilize the resources that we have. But I'm not trying to belabor anything, but I like teachable moments.
No, and I appreciate that, and I think maybe we should at some point have the other bodies come before the commission to have that larger discussion in, in broader sense, so that we're not, we're not isolated on one issue to talk about broader issues.
Okay.
I think we're, we're in good space with, with the Aldermen surveying on the commission for this particular space, brings a special dynamic, dynamic that we don't have normally. Uh, so I'm really interested in hearing, you know, Commissioner Coen's, you know, concern about this, because this is his backyard, literally.
Well, so Dale, Don, Otis, if, if this gets passed by the planning commission Board of Aldermen, does it negate, so, right now, there is no master developer, right? So, in the past, we've talked about Chapter 99s with master developers, or, you know, 353, you know, what have you, depending upon, you know, what happens with Cleveland High School and who comes in, all that kind of stuff. Would this negate in the future the opportunity to have a master developer for the Chapter 99? Or a 353?
Well, it certainly doesn't negate a master developer. I mean, you can have them, that, that sort of simplifies everything. Could be some of it turned into a 353.
But we would have to amend, we would have to amend the ordinance in that case, or is there, what's the process behind that? If there's a master developer that?
Well, yeah, I mean, the process would be, uh, as part of advertising for the public hearing, which is next week, we'd also advertise for developments. In other words, we, we've done that.
The public hearing on Thursday?
Yeah.
This week?
At, at the end, yeah, I'm sorry, this week. At the, uh, at the, sorry, I'm sorry. At the end of that, uh, is, is also a request for developers. And that just satisfies whatever other legal requirements we might have for that. So tomorrow, a developer could come in, a developer is to submit a proposal if he would want to.
The likelihood of that happening is probably zero, and.
I realize, because I passed one of these along South Grant 10 years ago, I'm still waiting.
Right, right. So let me, so, knit a few things together, both facts, concerns, worries, attitudes. To say, what we have here is this unique item that's some 200 acres. It has a major building facility on it, Cleveland High School, that needs some attention, is getting attention from a number of ways. It is going to be found to be in compliance with the strategic land use plan. It's looked at, this is a larger residential area. It will be, after this pass, blighted and with a redevelopment plan. That means, as Dale just said, the advertising goes into effect, and people can come, be a developer, and request assistance, tax abatement assistance, without going from scratch, either for Cleveland High School or a single family on one of these, that's a good thing, that's a positive thing. Second is, I think Alderman Coen mentioned that there's only, we only think there's two dozen, two dozen plus LRA properties in this area. Those properties, as of, as of the passage of this, LRA, city will be able to market those saying, here's a property, here's your tax abatement package is available for that property. Those are steps that this is going to create. Otis is talking about ramping up that marketing and outreach, and see what happens. You a questioner of whom?
So, I will entertain a motion.
I mean, I'll make the motion that we pass up the Chapter 99 blighting plan for the Merrimack Grand Virginia Beach corridor.
It's been moved and seconded for the pass, for the approval of this, of this land report. David, would you call it over, please?
Alderman Boy.
Hi.
Alderman Coen. Hi. Commissioner Benton. Hi. Commissioner Boiles. Hi. Commissioner Bradley. Hi. Commissioner Brown. Hi. Commissioner Reed?
Hi.
Commissioner Valium. Hi. Commissioner Young.
Hi.
Chief Rogers. Hi. You can pass this with all present conveners? Hi.
With that, and let me, let me backtrack to what Commissioner Jeff said. I think it is critical that we do find the time to have that, have a master plan planned for all of us, so that, as we're going through items, we can, we can hold up mentally in our own minds against what's been, what's being done by LRA, what's being done by SLDC, what's being done by whoever else, so that we're not operating isolated, in isolation. I think that is, I think that's a great opportunity to be creative. I think you've spoken to that last week, Tony, about a plan and us working, you know, in the vision on just thumbnail opportunities. Because one of the reasons why, I should have mentioned this when I was moving the slide, is not only will this work in conjunction with SLU, which is the highest that we can do this check, is the Graffley-Jefferson Historic Ambit Plan has been created by a tremendous amount of citizen work. We've adopted it, and its geography is a little different, but it's there to help guide SLDC in recruitment effort and community support.
Okay, next item we have?
So the next item on your agenda is about blighting plan redevelopment plan for the Cottage Avenue, North Taylor Avenue, Monmouth, County Park, and the area. You'll see the, the map on the, you're seeing now. The proposal is to construct a family and family-style home. This is an area of the site outlined in yellow. And the specific plan designate this area as neighborhood development area. The development area of the case in the home. And that's wanted to be in conformity with the specific plan.
There's two brothers that are the developing firm that are enthusiastic, they're supported by Alderman Moore. They weren't able to be here. Lobster Brothers. It's lobster brothers. The Nanyil Riven.
Any discussion on this?
Uh, I'm just kind of curious, does SLDC feel like there's a high likelihood that this is going to be a project that moves forward? Seems.
Based on the interaction with the brothers, they seem to have lots of energy and really wants to get this done. And I guess I initially, uh, considered when they were trying to build, uh, a home that may have been to a purpose for this area, but I guess that's the discussion with them, and I think they're locked in.
I mean, they feel they have the financial to go two or three display houses, and hopefully they'll sell off of them. Maybe the playhouses might be more elaborate, and they'll eventually find people that who is wants something similar, but maybe not quite so elaborate, but, uh, they, uh.
Is there a CD for work in the project?
There's not, no.
Are they going to sweep it out?
I got no indication that they plan on doing it, no. I, I mean, they have some, some luck, discussions, and they have not.
Is there a site plan showing the proposed, you know, way out of the new development? Because it looks like an office yard area for just 18 homes. Oh, there.
I have a question, think about the lighting report. Um, this looks really familiar, because I remember the Enrath from last year. Um, there's a ceiling of grass that is N R E P. And just because this looks like the same report that we had for the project end of all of our last year, I mean, last week, rather than Monday, is there any way to get something that is a little more? Mean?
Substituted.
Substituted. Like, I just don't know, it just kind of all, all just look hard into their quote. This looks like exactly the same.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's the same basic form it's used for each project.
Well, and I think because what's filled out is exactly the same wording, because I see Enrath again. And it's just, it's a very different situation in this project than it was in the project we had.
And usually, when we have a little more time, we do an independent sort of look at it of our own cultures of other people. Just as the finding report has its attention.
Well, we'll, we'll take that under consideration, because I agree.
Well, we'll take that under consideration, because I agree that we can do a better job in customizing the report to the project.
Yeah, it would be really nice to have a data about vacant space, and think what happened, and what's been formed, or more, yeah, more comparative data.
I agree.
Commissioner Boy.
So what am I, the bottom picture on the left, what am I looking at? Looks like a garage.
Well, it's the mirror of a house, and there are a number of different plans they have, but the houses would be, the right hand is what essentially the house would, well, this, but they have several different models they want to build, but that's one of the models they would build.
So I'm just, just to orient myself right, the houses. So this model is this model. Would that be correct?
I don't.
This is a cash garage, right?
Exactly, right.
This looks like a deep tax.
Yeah, they have some of each.
It looks like that.
I think they.
Well, the top, top third one and.
Phase two, phase two at the top, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you just like three or four, they have a cash garage, just two.
Kind of.
Yeah.
All that, all that.
Mm-hmm.
All of them have that. But, so, so what? All of these, well, that's the, that's.
People are right, like, there's three of them, two of them sit there. I'm thinking, these two here look like they might be.
Oh, there it is. I'm trying to find it.
And they're all the same.
So the tan buildings are existing buildings. A couple of them are occupied, a couple of them are unoccupied.
Okay.
So this will allow for their renovation.
Are there demos included in the stall?
No, they're not planning on demolishing those houses. So those are existing conditions reported by, in our photograph. And then the next one, which is the Strategic Land Use Plan. That color, look at that orange, as opposed to the yellow means that the neighborhood preservation area, stable neighborhood area. Orange means, at the time, when we were looking at this Strategic Land Use Plan, a good fifty percent of those blocks that are shaded orange was vacant at the time of relitivism. So they were envisioned as being, yellow is infill opportunity, the orange is something available for a large scale developer to do something. So here we have the Lobster Brothers looking at a large scale development on that vacant site in our photograph, and it was, that's been after the past muster of developers.
And what was the price point, like, just the price point of these, that they have?
Yeah, they were looking at like three fifty four thousand dollars. They were large buildings, I suppose, of discussion. Right. But we're first, to develop something that is lower hand, and I think.
Are all of these to be built on double lots?
Yeah.
So what's the reason for such wide spacing?
They definitely wanted them to be on substantial lots, no question about it. And Alderman was very supportive of that idea. The thought was that there's nothing like that available in the area where you could actually have a house on, you know, like a sixty foot lot, and they wanted to provide that opportunity.
I'm curious, from the planning department's perspective, is the goal to suburbanize the city with huge lots? I mean, come on. I mean, aren't you taking away?
Not my objective. Never have. Tired of forcing the people, people believing because there are suburban houses that the planning department isn't supporting.
Well, it's not just the design, it's the size of the lots.
And the good news is, I've been here thirty years, I'm not going to be here much longer. It's just, it's stupid for me to be here much longer.
But you've been saying that for, since twenty years.
Part of that is, I'm giving the background off, because I don't have money to give anybody. You will notice, anyway, to digress, Patrick Sandel is, we're the Planning and Urban Design Agency, but we call ourselves P D A for two reasons. One, say Buddha out loud, it sounds pretty bad. And two, we know we're urban, so we're trying to make sure that we treat people as urban. This particular ward, the fourth ward in the neighborhood, the neighborhood, we're done a lot along Dr. Marley's, we're doing a lot. There are over five hundred vacant parcels, like vacant buildings or vacant lots in the fourth ward, and that's a large concentration. So the historic district, as I mentioned, is we're really policing the historic district more for things that are compatible, but then there are some opportunities where to try to find the positivity or something.
So there will be no opportunities to build in between those houses if this is all built out? Those lots will stay as?
Unless, unless they devise a lot and sell it off, people make more dollars for it.
They market, and markets will dictate that, because right now, there's still the stuff showing, you know, saying, oh, they can be selling three hundred and fifty thousand dollar lot.
So we have a.
There's big F for sure.
So the answer is, like, we've got, the price again high, we'll see how it comes, but.
Well, you, but you also don't want to have them in a position where they think they can do it, and then they fail, and then we're back to, kind of, what we're saying earlier, it looked real good on paper at the beginning, and then we end up with nothing down the line.
Do they own the lots right now?
They have options.
They have options.
Is it L R A?
They tell the truth, and people are liking people speaking the truth. We had a meeting last week on Monday night, we hurriedly got our materials for you, we were a little hurried in getting materials too. Apologize for that, I'm pained by that, frustrated by that, I don't like that.
Any further discussion on sixteen dash nineteen R D M, the Lobsters' plan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Previous roll.
Oh, the previous roll.
Objection.
Okay. With that, we need a roll, please.
Alderman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Combs.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Nay.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
I'm listening, no.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
And Commissioner Stroud.
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven ayes and three.
The city goes on, but wait a second. I will tell you that we have two more redevelopment plans to do yet tonight, and that the principals involved in both of them are here, and I've heard on prior discussions, so.
You want to just shortcut this one straight?
Would you like to take us for a behalf?
You'll not find the next two to be too suburban. No, I don't think you'll find the next two to be.
Because you learn how to get them in early, you get higher on the agenda.
I think you will find the next two as being responsive, polite, and doing things for you, and absolutely.
Yeah, the next item on your agenda is the blighting study redevelopment plans for the Belt Avenue, Enright Avenue, Delmar Boulevard, also known as the I forty six seven to the I five five nine Delmar Boulevard. These sites can be seen on the screen now. This has been, this is my old photograph, this is outlined in yellow. On the screen now are the day and nighttime measures of the proposed development. The proposal is to make modifications to the existing structure to allow for mixed uses providing residential and commercial uses, including offices, shared service, and other resources for nonprofits and community organizations.
You see those as a strategic one?
Yes, a strategic one. The strategic wave plan designates this area as opportunity area. And the opportunity area designation is flexible, and this is a large development proposed to transform the existing vacant structures to a usable and valuable mixed use. P D A finds this plan giving comments with the strategic wave plan, opportunity area, and recommends approval.
Developers representative, answer, for help. And, and, the county's here. You're free to ask him any questions, but I'd like Craig to just have a little spiel about what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, this is Delmar Vine, it's the old, we work at the old St. Luke's Hospital complex. Delmar Vine has, as I mentioned, a mixed use project, social innovation project that is a mix of moderately priced, market rate apartments, one hundred and fifty of those, along with a co-location facility for nonprofits. So it's kind of a cortex for nonprofits where these agencies can come together and hopefully get the benefit of co-location, but also by being in close proximity, will be able to work together, be more innovative and collaborative, and then therefore be able to make a bigger impact in the region, helping folks in need. So we got involved, we got a lot of support from Washington University and others, so Bob Clark, that's about a couple of years ago, and agreed, saw some merit of it, what I could do for the region, and agreed to do the, get it developed. It's not a typical Clayco or C R G project, but it's one that we feel is important for the region. It's not an easy project to pull off, it's going to be very expensive, it's about a half a million square feet as it's there today. It's got rehab, so you have got rehab type cost. Nonprofits still, of course, can't afford a lot in rent, so there's not a lot, the project can't afford a lot of debt. So we're being creative, using every incentive we can to make it work, along with the large capital campaign. But I think at the end of the day, it'll be a great thing for the West End, it'll hopefully spur more development for Delmar, and more importantly, be able to really have these nonprofits be able to get more done.
Mr. Stroud.
Any questions before I?
Tell me what moderately priced looks like.
So moderately priced, you know, if you were, if these were low income and developed with the loans and housing tax credit, the resident would have to make only fifty or sixty percent of the median income. So a single person living in a one bedroom, for instance, would be able to make thirty, thirty-one thousand a year. If they made a little over that, then they couldn't get into a unit. We're trying to have workforce price housing where they could, the resident there would make a little more than that. Like a school teacher, a social worker making thirty-five, maybe forty thousand dollars, they're not going to afford a lot of the new apartments that people are developing and charging a buck, eighty-two dollars to, you know, more uplift. These are more like a dollar forty-five to a dollar fifty a foot. So, you know, we want to have a product there that we think is in need, but not use the loans and credit where we would restrict it. So for housing's for housing, if somebody comes along and makes a lot of money, wants to live there.
Market rate.
Market rate, but we're purposely trying to keep it low, to still, what we feel in need is.
And what percentage of the space you think the nonprofits will actually work with percentage of the whole project?
Well, there's, the first phase of commercial is about one hundred and fifty thousand gross square feet of commercial, one hundred and ten or so leasable, so there's a lot of shared spaces, there'll be a co-working facility and all that there. So that, when I say kitchen areas, break areas, conference rooms, training centers, a little auditorium, should be a real resource for not only the folks who locate there, but also for the neighborhood that comes to this.
Okay. And I'm going to ask a question, because I'm missing a link here.
Okay.
The interest that Maxine Clark and Bilderberg have in this with Clay Coles, am I missing a bridge between the two of them?
I don't think it's a bridge, this was kind of Maxine had this idea, you know, as you can imagine, Maxine has been a real estate developer, so this is a good, this is potentially all in, a hundred and hundred million dollar project, so it's not a good place to start and start a real estate developer, that's why the folks at Wash U were able to, Bob Clark, there's no relation there between Maxine and Bob.
I guess that's what I'm trying, is there any tunnels or bridges that we missed?
No, no, Maxine is, you know, founder of Bilderberg, and now retired, but she spends her retirement years working in these agencies, and found that a lot of them were, you know, they're all very hardworking, well-intentioned people, but they tend to work in their silo, they head down, and they got their mission and they're all about it, but they, they could get more done if they knew what others were doing. Work together better.
Any other commissioner questions? Before Don speaks, we need to get ready to jump in. He's jumping up.
So, so there are community spaces in this facility that will be open to the rest of the community? And is that, what types of spaces are those again?
Well, it's, you know, there's all sharing spaces. There'd be places where the neighborhood groups can come and have meetings, there'll be like, there will be a lot of, the neighbors, people actually provide services here too, I think that's important. But then also, there'll be like organizations doing computer training, skills training, and all the kinds of things. For us, it's developing the real estate to make sure we get the real estate rights and the cultures right, but just that cortex is ongoing program, and possibly involve individuals, reach needs, this is pretty similar here. Wash U has stepped up and will be putting money into the project, but also will be there long term to help with Brown School and other, make sure the programming and operation is.
Question for Dale. Dale, in a real simple way, explain to me when it's tackling the property tax exempt, which this is, correct?
It has been in the past.
It's currently tax exempt, isn't it?
Yeah. Right, I mean, it's L C R A owned.
And with a hospital, or whatever.
Right, exactly, so probably never been on the tax roll.
Okay, so the redevelopment plan calls for, you know, for a tax abatement, it says five percent of, what did, explain this language in here, about the five percent.
Well, when it is no longer tax exempt, the assessor will put a value on it.
Okay.
And then we can pay taxes. But it says, the assessor says it has to pay a hundred thousand dollars in taxes, so since it's tax exempt, except for five percent of that, they'll have to pay. So five percent of that will go to all the tax businesses.
Okay.
So the ninety-five percent will be tax abated for a period of years while all of them are tax abated.
Got you. So they could put some kind of value on it.
Yeah, I mean, they will, they will put some value on it. Fantastic, wonderful project, began as an L C R A, S O B C, R.
There we go, bring it all back around, Don. That's great, wipes his forehead. On that note, I will entertain any motion. Is the move seconded? The call for roll, please.
Alderman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Combs.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Vine.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Stroud.
Aye.
The passes with all present voting?
Aye. And Commissioner Reed, please forgive me, normally I do call you by name to see if you have any questions. So your name tags on my site, so I will remember that next time.
One more action, I will.
Thank you. I know, that's another name we put up.
Yeah, last item on your agenda is the blighting study redevelopment plan for two hundred North Fourth Street redevelopment area, the site map can be seen on the screen now. It is two point one five acres. This is an aerial photograph of the site outlined in yellow. The proposal is to renovate an existing commercial building, which currently includes four hundred and forty hotel rooms. It will be, it would be converted into retail space, one hundred and eighty-six hotel rooms, ninety-six, ninety acres, one hundred and sixty apartments, and would have five hundred and seventy-four parking spaces as well. The cost of the project is expected to be approximately thirty million. The strategic land use plan designates this area as specialty mixed use area, and give it to the specialty mixed use area designation and recommend to where mixed uses coexist and thrive together. Development proposal aims to transform this hotel into a mixed use, as the P D A staff finds that it conforms to the strategic land use plan at M U A designation and recommends.
Developer and representative, you're welcome. Developer, uh, representative, is that it?
My name's David Sweeney, attorney for the developers, Inner Circle from Florida. Uh, as played out earlier, um, this is taking a lot of apartments, excuse me, a lot of hotel rooms and bringing that footprint down significantly. Um, it's bringing a whole new section with the vacation rental. Diamond Resorts is the company that's doing that, you may have seen them in the community the last year, um, at public events, they have invested a significant amount of money into building that up. Um, we've talked with City Rag, but we're very excited to bring in a whole different set of tourists that we normally wouldn't see. It's really Diamond Resorts' first foray into the urban setting, typically used in Las Vegas, on the beaches, different places like that, for obviously. Um, uh, this project also truly is a mixed use, you also have apartments as well as a significantly smaller number of hotels.
Do the three hundred and plus odd million dollars investment in the arch grounds, is any attractive?
Absolutely. I think the same loads are folks that aren't from here, myself included, um, and we appreciate what we have. Um, they're very interested not only in this site, but also some very tall buildings right around it that they're looking at, um, as well as some other projects, so, um, they see a potential in St. Louis and really promoting there.
What hotel was there, previous?
Brown Plaza.
Been a few, been a bunch of different things.
It's been, it's been solely branded currently.
So, Commissioner Vine, please...
Oh, I was just gonna ask, um, I think it says, you know, in the agenda or in the, whatever you have here for the record, um, it's not gonna alter the exterior of the building?
Not, not at all, they'll be going after store tax credit, they'll be able to...
If there was a plan floated for one of those mansion house buildings, some, you know, like ten years ago, we were gonna renovate and brick up, make it look ridiculous.
Absolutely not, Dave, this is for, that, that's only for sure I can speak to, that won't, that is not in their thoughts at all.
Uh, yeah, so, excuse my ignorance for not knowing a lot about the legalities about timeshares and stuff, but say, don't, you know, not saying, hoping this happens, but say the timeshare thing doesn't work out, is that going to in any way hamper a potential, the next redevelopment of this building, should that come around?
I mean, they're in a contract with them, so this isn't an L O I or anything else, so, um, it's gonna happen for a short number of years, not for the whole time.
Okay.
Um, they're making a significant investment, like I said, I mean, if you go to the Billings games, the Cardinals games, it's not cheap to be in the concourse in four locations, um, the Blues games, they have time. So they're, they're really, I mean, as we all know, but a lot of other people don't know, once they're here, they've already paid for it, so they, they're coming with money to spend bluntly. And also, the great thing about St. Louis, not only being in the middle of the country, is with families, there's so much stuff to do very inexpensively, if not free. So it's definitely another benefit to get folks to come and, and the odds went up, the arch improvements, and you know, as we all, as everyone knows, the arch is totally different now, somehow, I don't know how they did it, but the experience is totally different.
Three hundred million dollars. That's how they did it. I hear it's good, yes, it's closed now, but, uh...
But they tried to break it up and get a little bit.
Very different too. So, Commissioner Boyd. Dave, I'm trying to add these numbers up, so, think where I'm going off with the math. So currently it's four hundred and forty hotel rooms, so they're gonna reduce that to a hundred and eighty-six hotel rooms, ninety-six timeshares and a hundred and sixty apartments, I come up with four forty-two, so they, they're...
Wasn't one and a half.
That's something.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's those numbers.
So, because I hate timeshares, so I'm stuck with one?
They make a lot of money.
Well, if you're gonna refute yourself because of that, I appreciate it.
I absolutely would not.
If you have a, that's an interesting...
But I'm curious as to how they do their, run their numbers on those timeshares, because that, because fifty-two, so you have...
Every one of them.
Fifty-two owners for a year times, I need to say. You're just looking at, thirty million dollars seem to be kind of cheap, but that's not what we're talking about, but that seems to be a low-ball number to do all this stuff. It's gonna be a low-budget timeshare, of course.
I think the option, I mean, timeshares have changed a lot from what I've read about the industry and everything else, I mean, they're not taking anybody, I mean, the left economic downturn, financially it made no sense and people, so they want people with good credit scores, you clearly are better credit sheet than I am ultimately, so I don't know if I...
I doubt, I doubt that, I doubt that.
I didn't, I didn't feel like you learned, sir.
You could buy mine.
Commissioner Reed, is there any question from you?
No, I'm good.
Any other questions from the commission? There ain't none?
So, just one, so this is the first urban project that you, that this company is doing, are you aware of any other projects like this anywhere across else in the country?
See, no, because Starred is one of like two, three biggest players in that. What you are seeing as far as the timeshare world goes, and I think this kind of shows it becoming more mainstream, every hotel brand has their own timeshare now. I don't know people, like the Westin brand, Marriott, they're all getting in that space and using their current hotel in the coffin in that or even their room. So, um, you're seeing most of them, even like a, a Four Seasons type place, they have something that would fall under vacation.
Dave, did you realize, um, on those timeshares, how many owners would be?
Vacation rental.
Four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two owners. Fifty-two, if you say one person that buys a week, that's fifty-two owners times ninety-six rooms, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two owners, potential, that's incredible.
So maybe you're in the wrong.
You have to hang out with Dave Sweeney, I'd say you had and learned something here.
But someone with a really good credit score might take two weeks.
That's right. But we're still counting.
Now, those are all thousands of visitors that we may not get, and I think that's a great...
And it works, I've used them going, staying in a hotel versus staying in a resort somewhere, so it works.
Move approval.
Can we get previous roll of this?
There ain't no objection to previous roll? Thank you, Commissioner Boyd, this is a lobby today. With that, the previous roll is approved.
No, you, our other, other business to do other than seeing you on February sixth, and, uh, I think the next room might have been boring compared to the last time, but we don't need to give them on because we had two and seven of them. You want to give us any background on why we had refreshment for, for things?
Is there any particular reason?
Should we expect this from now on?
Experience, not even coming back.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, with, I just, generous, I bought them.
Thank you, Don.
With that, any, there's no new business out here, mostly the clothes, I mean, moving in there.